Harry there?
Yes, she is.
Okay.
Your one call for it.
What was that? My one, what?
Your one call for it.
Oh, there you are. Right here.
Hi, Mike.
Call this meeting order Stewart City Council tentative agenda Monday, August ninth, two thousand twenty-one, six thirty P M, Council chamber. Call through order. Beldon, here. Renslow.
Here.
Glass.
Here.
Kaba.
Here.
Asprem.
Here.
Agenda approval, consent agenda, approval of minutes of seven twelve, two thousand twenty-one, and special meeting of seven twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we will do it all. Moved and seconded. How do you vote? Beldon?
Yes.
Renslow?
Yes.
Glass?
Yes.
Kaba?
Yes.
Asprem?
Yes.
Okay, dead tree located at two fifteen North Fremont.
Do you want me to say something about that?
Well, I think we're gonna probably refer to the term.
So Mike Johnson contacted me and asked me about it, and I asked him to call City Hall regarding the tree. So it sounds like he called Sarah. Sarah referred it to Jim. Jim looked at it and then brought it to our attention because I don't think... When we talked about trees last month, we talked... We didn't go any further figuring out whether, what constitutes a dead tree versus a live tree or all that. So I think that's why it was put on the agenda. And then I asked Mike Worgen to make sure that Mr. Johnson knew that it was on the agenda, and then he sent that email. But he was notified before the tree was taken down that it was gonna be discussed. And I think, referring it to Steve Brick to figure out, not only is this tree dead, but to clarify in our code what's dead and what's alive, and make sure we have a clear understanding of when it's standing, what constitutes dead and doesn't.
City and council approval. Yes. Send it to Steve Brick. Sheet a motion.
I'll move it.
Looked by Renslow, seconded by Beldon. How do you vote? Beldon?
Yes.
Renslow?
Yes.
Glass?
Yes.
What may I? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't hear where voting on.
We're sending the dead tree located at two fifteen North Fremont and all the others around town to Steve Brick to go over our ordinance because there's kind of conflict on what's going on.
Okay.
And so, how do you vote then?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, man. Okay, White Pole Road maintenance project.
Actually, we had to talk about the ashtrays.
Yeah, yeah.
That was part of it. So...
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Sorry, the other part of that was that Jim Henderson has been discussing with the council our ashtray problem. And it seems like we keep talking about it and talking about it, but we don't have a plan on maybe how we're gonna go about it. And I don't know if Jim has any idea on how he wants to approach going through and tackling that project and...
Think you better address your ordinance first, and then we'll go from there.
And then we'll go from there.
That's what I think. Let Steve come up with it.
Okay, so if there's proposals, can Jim be looked into? See, that would be...
Okay, now we'll go to White Pole Road maintenance project. Forrest, you gonna talk about this?
Yes, Mayor. I don't have to email, but... It is all different. I've updated it. Similar, but a little different. And so a lot of this will be... Or a jingle. So a lot of this, so Forrest Aldrich, you can stream him. A lot of this is a repeat from the special council meeting we had. But I just wanted to update the council on where we were at with White Pole Road repairs. And so I put together an updated PowerPoint presentation from the last meeting, and I hand those to council, and yeah, I have it up on the screen. Thank you, Mike. So to go through this, the city has undertaken several street improvement projects in downtown area. Back in two thousand eight, it was North Division. Two thousand sixteen, seventeen, it was Division going through the downtown area. And now we're looking at White Pole Road needing to have repairs to it, primarily because we get like the truck traffic on White Pole Road or Front Street, which is the street right here in front of us. And so we're seeing a lot of rutting of the pavement on White Pole Road because of the loaded trucks, so. So what we've been looking at, what we've been talking about this whole time is a stretch going from All Saints Drive by the Catholic Church driveway going on, gets to the west of the high school, all the way to Adair Street, which is the close to the western, or the city limits of the city of Stewart. So it's that stretch of road that we're talking about when I say White Pole Road or Front Street. And so these are slides that everybody has kind of seen. You kind of, Jim went out, get some good pictures of showing the rutting going on. We have some drainage problems on the west side of Stewart. On the south side, I'm sorry, on the south side of east side of Stewart by Hellgast, there's some drainage problems there. That's what this left picture is showing. We looked at two options. So option number one is basically going and filling in the ruts with asphalt. It's a short-term fix. Two hundred thousand is the number I presented at the last council meeting. I have got two fifty to handle some of those drainage issues at the same time by Hellgast and then also by R and D over on the west side of town. And I, Councilman Asprem and Councilman Kaba asked me to be involved in those drainage issues. So I put, I talked to Jim. We came up with some ideas on, for fixes for those drainage... Crown number, kind of thrown that was another fifty thousand. So if you want to say Landis, that's... Those drainage improvements, so. More complete repair, which would be milling the street and the drainage improvements, getting the crown back. Councilman Asprem, including, you know, fixing the crown up in front of City Hall here where it's really steep. You know, doing kind of a more long-term road project. You know, we have to make somewhere closer to one and a half million dollars for that. At the last council meeting, the... So here's kind of the life expectancy and kind of a little explanation of those. So again, goes back to, you know, what those costs are. With the, again, the two thousand and eight North Division Street project, sixteen downtown, and then proposed twenty-two Front Street or White Pole Road. And here's kind of, I'm not gonna go through this in detail, but here's kind of a table showing the implications. This is based on two hundred thousand rather than two fifty, but this is kind of the cost implications and the financing behind those two options. So, next. So here's kind of the cost impacts of the city and some of the, some bullet points associated with that. You know, and I won't go through those line item by line item. I've talked about those before. So next. Here's kind of a levy impact and what that would be for council's information as far as, you know, what that levy impact would be. And again, this is information that was up the last time. Right now, council, at the last council meeting, council's direction was to pursue option number one, which is just kind of filling in the ruts. I have talked to an asphalt contractor, and they've been getting some details from Jim. They don't have that for tonight, but at work, I'm trying to get a quote from that asphalt contractor to get that two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand and actually have that be something that there could be council action on approving that quote. Haven't received it yet. We have a special meetings coming up here yet this month. Probably could get it on one of those agenda items.
Since that calendar-wise, is it feasible to do this?
Yes, I talked to the contractor, and they didn't see any problems getting that work done yet this year.
Getting what work done?
Getting the repair, getting the repair work done to White Pole Road, filling in the ruts yet this fall. They thought they could get it.
Why are we putting, why are we investing dollars?
That, I, I, that was the direction I had from the council at the last meeting was to go with the two hundred thousand dollar or two hundred and fifty thousand dollar option, which fixing the drainage at Hellgast, Atlantis, fixing the gap, the drainage at R and D, and then filling in the ruts with asphalt. Because that was kind of the option that the city thought that they had the financing to be able to do that part of it, but not the full, one and a half dollar complete fix.
I think it goes back to the tax rate. Page eleven, you said option one is a seven percent rate increase on citizens of Stewart, and option two is a seventeen percent tax rate increase, and the life expectancy of the bond would be the same as option two. So, I mean, that's what led me to...
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna have to be doing that.
You should be doing it here.
Just revolving door. Yeah.
Have a question for us?
Yes.
What's our responsibility as far as DOT with maintaining that?
This is completely city-owned. The DOT has no jurisdiction over this street.
Okay.
It used to, used to be Old Highway Six, but they generously donated that to the city several years ago.
As far as the turning part?
Yeah, I haven't gotten to that part, but yes.
Okay. Do we have a timeline for a revised route? Has anybody thought about that?
So let me, let me continue, and maybe we can address some of that, Councilman Glass, if that's okay.
Sure.
So go to, so this is the current truck routes that we have in town. If we do not move forward with any proposed truck routes, we, and these, they the way they are, these need some fixing. Like I mentioned before, second, North Second Street, truck route goes all the way out to the end of Womboldt, which doesn't make any sense, but that's how the current ordinance is written. It was written before Womboldt was ever thought about. So we want to make, make some changes to this if the council decides to keep the existing truck route in place. So what the discussions have been, and actually, this is the same discussion that the city council had six years ago, was to go with looking at an option of restricting turning movements at the intersection of Front and Division. Trucks could still go through east-west, trucks could still go through north-south, but they cannot turn at the intersection. And then to accommodate that, we would expand the truck route so that the truck route would go on Southwest Seventh, so go by Carl Chevrolet, and then it would go north on the north side of Wausau, go west out of town, and then go north on Trenton. And then also, we have a truck route on North Tenth, which should be east-west on the north city limits of the city. And, you know, we don't have jurisdiction in the county, of course, but on this, I showed where those county roads are at in the purple, just kind of showing how it all could possibly connect. So that's something for the council to consider. And I know there's, at the last council meeting, there was direction to Steve Brick to prepare some ordinances and resolutions to start looking at this, putting this in place. And that, that's kind of, that's kind of what Steve Brick, kind of turning that over again as far as what that looks like. And so then, kind of the next slide. So there's some question of, well, what would we do to restrict the turning movement for the trucks at the intersection? And there's all kinds of ways that could be done. You could put planter mediums, but this is kind of the simplest way. You put a median, and you have line markers like is shown in here, where the truck can't turn that without running over the markers. You might need to tighten up the returns so the back wheel of the truck can't follow the curve around. We haven't really gotten into those details. You know, that's something that we would look at if this ordinance gets passed. Then we would work with Jim at Public Works to see, you know, maybe we'd want to do something temporary, and then if the, you know, some temporary things that could be put up more immediate. And then long-term, look at some permanent things to, and have some permanent infrastruts, mediums and permanent return restrictions. But that's kind of, kind of an idea on what that might look like. So next slide is, this is an appendix, and it's just kind of a summary of all this in one spot. This kind of, kind of puts everything together from the previous information that we saw on the telephone. So, any questions? Yes?
I, I don't know. I am a maybe old-fashioned, but definitely a Scrooge when it comes to this project because my solution would be to either have a tax on the road if it belongs to us or have speed limit signs to vastly slow people down from the school through the entire town. That's just a huge amount of money to be spending now for a street improvement that's gonna last us how long? And the taxpayers are gonna pay for it. I know you said motorcyclists don't like, because it's, they don't like the ruts. Different, I mean, there's different things. I don't like going through just flash water. However, I think that water problem is a separate issue. I mean, that is a bad little stretch where there's water. So number one, I do not approve of spending this much money at this time because I don't know how many people take it seriously, but I take seriously the spread of the Delta virus and the fact that we're not finished with COVID. And I think we need to be very careful about where we spend our money. Put a ten mile an hour speed limit all the way from there to the end of town. And the turning trucks, I don't totally understand the issue with the turning, why that's part of the, maybe I'm just not seeing that part. But to lay that road at this time, I mean, we're looking at winter coming. Winter always is hard on road anyway. And maybe that wouldn't be part of the timeline. I just think we need to slow down and have our traffic slowed down and think in terms of where we could better use that money if we really want to spend it so badly. And, and my question is, since Hellgast seems to be the area where there is that problem with water and drainage, wouldn't Hellgast shoulder some of this expense for that part of it anyway?
Could possibly. I have not had any discussions with Hellgast about that. So that could be a possibility. And Councilman Glass, what you suggest, not doing anything and slowing the traffic, that is an option as well. I mean, if, if we want to live with the ruts that are there and the water between it, and we're okay with that, you know, that, that is an option. You know, the do-nothing option, or the only thing with the speed down to ten is, you know, you talk to your police force about what they think about enforcement of that because that could be pretty tough to enforce, but, but that is an option.
So is it the, the speed of the vehicles or the weight of the vehicles that's causing the rut? Because to me, it feels like it's the, it's the weight on the road that's causing the rut, not how fast or how slow they're going.
Right, that is correct. It's the weight. So the only thing by, the only, what we're trying to accomplish, either by restricting the turn movements or by slowing the traffic to ten miles per hour, is to make it disadvantage, try and make it harder for trucks to use the route coming through the middle of town. So that gives them a separate way to go. If they have to make that turn, there's another way for them to go. If you slow it down to ten miles an hour, then that would also discourage people from coming through town, but not only trucks, everybody. I mean, because that speed limit would apply to all residents, not, and vehicles, not just the trucks.
Ten miles an hour is just a suggestion.
Yes, but a lower speed.
But I, I don't think that's a ridiculous thing to ask. We have a lot of kids in this town, and a lot of elderly people in this town. And traffic is an issue for kids on bikes, on foot. And just fixing the street doesn't address that. A speed limit might address more than just fixing the street. I just think we're too anxious to look for ways to spend our money. I think it would not hurt us to back off, do what repairs we can, and particularly if we can involve Hellgast in making some repairs that will keep that area over there, you know, from, from having water buildup, then we can deal with some of the other problems that we may end be gonna have in the near future.
Can I ask why you want to wait when you voted for using the county's bond capacity when there's only three council members here? You wanted to fix the road whenever that was.
No, I'm on here, Brian. Brian, I'm on here.
Okay.
You hear that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think what he's getting at is when we, when we first started talking about this six, seven months ago, you guys voted to use the bond capacity for the county to fix the road. Now that we chose to go a different option, and we now want to fix it, and we've gone through steps to figure that out, now all of a sudden, we want to drag our feet.
And that expense was ten, that expense was ten times higher than this one.
Right.
Drag our feet. I think that we need to, you're not gonna get any done this year anyway. But I think there needs to be planning made, fix this road, and fix it right.
Mick, you may have not heard Forrest, but he said he could get it done this year.
There's no sense in putting, there's no sense in putting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into it. Save that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and put it through the project. But, but the project needs to be planned with the county, with us, DOT, whatever we need. We need, we need to plan this thing out, plan out alternative routes and everything else while we're doing it.
Why would the DOT be involved if it's a city-owned road?
What?
Why would the DOT be involved if, if it's the city's road?
Because we would like to have, they're the ones who build all the damn highways, and they're the ones who know how to build the highway so they don't get broke down. So wouldn't you think that those, those are the people to go to, talk to, to, to find out and get information from?
And, and Councilman Asprem, we, we... You know, really... Councilman Asprem, we could, you know, we do that all the time designing streets. It's, you know, we get information from the DOT. You know, they provide classes on design and construction. So, you know, we do talk to the DOT.
I just want to answer Brian's question, why, why would I backstep? And I'm not sure that I backstep because I think I've always been hesitant to do anything except find alternate routes, which I think is the ultimate solution. But I, I am extra hesitant at this point because I think we all thought that COVID was going away, that we had beat, beat the disease.
But six months ago, when that motion was made with three council members here, there was a two-to-one COVID to obligate the taxpayers on a twenty-five percent tax increase. There was only three people here, and COVID was rampant, so I don't know what that means.
Well, it was Mick, myself, and Mick that was here, and Mike and Brian.
Make those decisions all the time.
Okay.
We thought that COVID was ending.
Free make those decisions all the time, Brian. Why would it be such a big, hard deal to do?
And now we find out that maybe it's not. I mean, time will tell. But I just think that it's not the wisest time to be looking for ways to spend taxpayers' money.
Forrest, I don't have a vote as mayor, but I've received numerous phone calls here tonight and during the week concerns about belly drop trailers dragging. One guy said he lost the whole bottom out. Now, are these roads designed out to Trenton that they won't drag? I mean, they're very low, low, he said.
There may be an issue at the railroad tracks. I guess I don't, I don't know that, Mayor.
I mean, before we...
But that's still a choice to go down that way. There's multiple routes.
Yeah, but if that's a problem, you know, they could keep on coming through Stewart and go to the Dexter exit, for example. So there are both, if, if that's a problem coming down Trenton, you know, they could go, keep on going through town and go to the Dexter exit. So there's some options you can get on the truck.
I guess a gentleman that called me today said he used to run eighty loads a year. Now he's down to thirty or forty. He said add that up by the amount of times he's going, it costs significant cost to him on alternate routes.
Yeah, and that's, and that's something the council needs to consider.
Yeah, okay.
So, Mayor, there was a gentleman.
Yeah.
Josh Seaborn, the Guthrie County engineer.
Is there anybody else? Does it have any other comments?
There's an engineer gonna talk in just a second, and then, oh, it's gonna talk.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, Josh Seaborn, the Guthrie County engineer. I've been researching this, that's the last council meeting. Because we talked, you know, five or six years ago, about the DOT. And while the DOT does not have jurisdiction because it is not that road, what I have learned is that the county does have concurrent co-jurisdiction with the city of Stewart.
And that's contrary to what our attorneys advise us on this?
This, I've received a, it's an attorney, uh, I don't know how to word this. It's a general guidance from the Attorney General, dated two thousand thirteen, and specifically references this.
So if that's the case, then why don't you have concurrent care with the city? Since you're here obviously concerned about this, why don't you have concurrent care from a dollar perspective? And so we don't have to raise taxes on our citizens?
That was, that's obviously where my thought process led us to. So I researched back, and in ninety-eight, ninety-nine, at the north end of the city in Division, there was a joint sharing of cost. What was considered the rural section coming into town was a split cost of fifty-fifty. And then the city's portion, I suppose, curving gutter, I've not looked into this in very detail just yet. That was the, brought by the city's cost as a part of the larger contract. So it was, all of this just kind of transpired here real recently, so I... So I don't have a lot of details just yet. But I wanted to make it and pay to your attention that the county does have some jurisdiction in this, in Whitepool Road. And also that the limiting of truck movements goes against the general principle of farm-to-market roadway. And the county or residents in the area could raise a formal complaint, legal action to go against that.
How do you recommend that we pay for this?
Well, this is new information, so I think we need to talk with the supervisors.
But it wasn't, to introduce you, I had the same discussion.
Yeah, I mean, we've, from what I know, we've approached the supervisors, been told, in fact, one supervisor told me Stewart will never receive any money from the county, never.
This is new to me. I've been here 12 years, so it could be.
So why are you presenting this tonight? Why isn't the supervisor representing that stuff that you do?
Because I just discovered this today. I haven't had time to brief them. So some of this is probably new to him as he said.
We've done two prior street projects in the last 10 years on the backs of the taxpayers, fully funded by them raising their taxes and they've asked similar to this one. And we're told no at that point. So we did again this time. Mick went up and we were able to get to the bond capacity part, which is great, but still no financial contribution, so we're still raising taxes on the same people.
The, and I asked that question.
And I know this is falling on you and your, so I apologize for that.
No, not at all, no. Because I asked the question, is it required? Well, no, it's not required. The county does not have to participate. It's a joint communication. Can we reach an agreement, signed at Gordon, signed at, kind of a deal? So.
We just can't afford, because if you think of North and South Division, that's full concrete. So this is 1.5 million to do the true, complete overlay, which is what Mick's talking about. And it'd only last the life of the bond, so we paid off, we do it again. And at that point, North and South Division are gonna be in the same boat. So, I mean, it's just a, you know, it's a revolving door for expenses and so.
I can tell you Whitepool Road's bubble into the surface on, at the county level for ourselves as well. And we are seeking funding options. So if we come up with some funding options, and that's, again, the supervisors have done an excellent job of providing funding for some other roads, it could be, there could be some sort of an agreement, a region arrangement made where we can do a joint thing like we did on P28 at the north end of the city.
But that's what Mick asked for, that's what they asked for in 2008 or 2016 as well. So we don't have any, we don't have a track.
Right.
We don't have any participation.
At that point, the county had no projects in the area, there was no interest. We have since, you know, we've done the wheel route filling, we had done micro-surfacing. We expended funds at that point. So we're at a point now where it's time to, we're just, same boat to you guys. Heavy trucks are traveling on the same road.
Sure.
Warren?
I just want to ask a question while the county engineer is at the podium. And that is, it looks very likely that the US Congress is gonna pass the infrastructure package. And as currently written, half of the road and bridge money is to go to local jurisdictions, counties and cities. And my experience in the past with funds like this is the entities that have projects ready to go are the ones that get funded. I just wondered if this wouldn't be a good time for the city and the county to sit down together and put together a plan, particularly if, we're talking Whitepool Road, truck routes around town, maybe involve Deere County as well, if we're gonna do a Beltway around both sides of town, put together a project so that once the bill is signed, we're ready to submit a proposal. And those are federal dollars that, you know, if we don't spend them, they're gonna go to somewhere else.
How long do you think that's gonna take?
Well, it won't be done by October, for sure. It won't be done by October, but if it's, you know, that thing's gonna be signed. There's just, everybody's behind it, that is important. And if you don't put together a team, I mean, my suggestion would be that you appoint a couple of city council people to sit down with the two county engineers and maybe a supervisor or two. And then have something to give to Forrest so he can put together a proposal that he can submit to whoever, I don't know, this is gonna go through the DOT or how they're gonna handle it.
I think that's an excellent idea.
My fear with that, and this is just, as I've heard of the infrastructure bill, and I think it's great, but my fear is, is that we've been trying to work with the supervisors for so long and it's not worked. I don't want to prolong everything. We did this already, and then the supervisors come back and they say, sorry. I mean, because it's happened before where they, we get to a point and then they just shut us down. So I don't want to keep pushing things off and say that we're gonna work with them and us come to the table willing, and then we get shut down again and we get told never. Because we've been told that twice before.
If we follow, if we follow Steve Rick's timeframe, I mean, we could move forward on what Forrest has put together, and that would give you an entire month of August before any of this would be effective. And so he's gonna take, when do they do his road improvement? I mean, timeline, timeline, whether it be September, October?
It'd be probably, I didn't ask that question, they just said yet this year, so I'm guessing October.
Okay, so we could still move forward on what revisions Forrest has made and still allow what Warren has said. And if something comes together by then, then let it be. But at least we've done something to moving.
Are you talking about that?
Are you gonna have the same two people, Mike and Councilman Aspern work with the supervisors like before?
To me, because of the timing, I'd recommend that you and Mike work together. That's just me.
Everett, the supervisor, you got something to say? Can you come up?
I just wanted to clarify the thing about working with the supervisor before we asked for help on the other project.
Everett, can you come up the podium, though, so Mick can hear? Thank you.
I just want to clarify about coming and asking the supervisors before for the previous project you had up here for help. And, you know, we might have looked at that except when, I believe it was Forrest that had his packet and presented it to us on the financing for that. And in that packet, it had $2 million in the reserve represented for the city that was utilities money. And I made the statement that you can't use that without the utility board releasing that to you. And Forrest said, you're right about that. But what else were you trying to misrepresent us with? That was what was going through my mind. So it was an issue of cross for me at that time, and now I'm just speaking for me.
Are you willing to, are you willing to participate in a road improvement with this proposal we've had?
What I'm willing to participate in, and I don't know who it'd be to represent the county if you have a meeting, is to work towards something that works for everybody. We should all be trying to get better than we are. And I know, and we know, we have expenses that we don't like all the time.
Don't doubt it.
So I just wanted to clarify that.
Thanks, Everett. Did you have something to say?
Yeah.
Come up here, please. Get everybody involved here.
That's right. We all got a position.
We'll work together eventually.
That's right, I'm the only attorney from Des Moines today, so. Andy Anderson, Director of the Poet. And we have a couple of buttons on this. One, on the turning lane and the restrictions, back in 2015, the DOT did inform you guys that you don't have the right to do that. And I've got the email that says that.
Can you share that with us?
Yeah, well, here, let me pass it out. And there's an email and there's, you know, basically, they say farm-to-market roads have to have a continuity so that the trucks can travel on the whole system. And so they've highlighted that, and it's in the Attorney General opinion that Josh offered. But they did offer an email, and I talked to them today, and they confirmed that.
So did Keith have the copy of the Attorney General's?
I've got a copy right in the packet here.
Oh, is it in there?
Yeah. So I wanted to get that to you because I didn't want you to run down that road and then find out you can't do it. But I mean, so they said you can, I think what they said you can do is they said you can, you can do an alternate truck route, but you can't change this one. You gotta leave this one too.
But our attorney's saying something completely different.
Well, he's wrong. And I'll send this to him, I'll send this to him. Because us attorneys, we disagree all the time. So I'll send this to him with a letter, a good sharp letter to remind him that he's wrong.
But the reason we backed off that five years ago, nothing to do with the DOT. Make sure we're clear. We had people in our community that were business owners and other folks, so we're just like, let's move on. That's why we voted on.
That may be, but this email also told you.
But it's still not specific to this intersection.
Actually, it is.
It says interconnected, that's very vague, right? With another truck route provided.
It says with the intersection of Front Street and Division Street.
Right, but I'm talking about the case, right? 306.5, I'm talking about the code. I'm just saying, Steve had his reason for recommending this as a potential alternative to it, so that's.
Yeah, yeah, and I think he's wrong, and I'll make that argument to him, I'll send this to him. So I think, you know, that we would disagree on that. And I'm not sure we think it's a good idea to shoot all that truck traffic out on the gravel road out there either, so.
God forbid Dave Rick be wrong.
So, so I wanted to get that to you. So we do object, and, you know, we'd object stronger if you did it. But so we thought we'd get that started, so you saw that. But we really would like to see, and hope that the county and the city would work together. You know, I've worked on a lot of projects, I've been a lawyer for 35 years, did a lot of development projects, and I was the chairman of Division Iowa Board for four and a half years and did a lot of public projects. And, you know, you can really only do big things when you work together. And I know it's not easy. And I've worked on, with many counties and cities, that didn't like each other very much or had disputes, and we've been able to get some big things done. And I think that, you know, if, you know, the county here and the city could sit down and try to maybe war and broker a little love amongst everybody. I think, you know, I agree with them that, you know, with this infrastructure bill coming down, try and grab it. I mean, you know, whenever we did financing provision Iowa, we always said, you know, we had to set city money in and county money in, but if you get some of that federal money, it's great because it's other people's money, you know, or it's our money that someone else is gonna get. So we can get that in. I think that really, you know, you should really work, but you gotta, you do, you gotta be ready. You gotta have kind of a plan, you gotta be working together to do it. And so I really would encourage you to do that. And if you, I've talked to DOT people on this, and if, you know, if we all need to sit down together, you know, we're happy to come, we're happy to invite, probably Josh or you guys could invite the DOT people. I mean, this is, you're not the first time the city's had this, some city in Iowa's had this come up. So it's an issue that's been out there before and it's been addressed by, you know, and it's a confusing area, the city, the city-county relationship over farm-to-market roads. It's not as well drafted as it could be.
Can I, because, yeah, with you saying that, you know, in here, you know, it says that there's nothing in the Iowa code which explicitly indicates there's concurrent jurisdiction between the county and the city for the farm-to-market extensions within larger cities. Now, what are they talking about, larger cities?
Well, they're talking, that's that big page of opinion in it. That's the one, so there's, it's between, so the ones that are under 500 population, the county's got all the jurisdiction.
500, 500 total?
Yeah, and then the ones between 500 and 2500, there's kind of a concurrent jurisdiction. And then with the real big ones, then the city's gotta bear it all. And so, yeah, it's not, it's not the easiest area of the law. So I don't think we should, I know you guys want to be the Supreme Court of Iowa, but, you know. So I think we should just, you guys take a look at that, and we're happy to participate in a meeting if you decide, you know, with the county to have a meeting, and, you know, we're happy to participate. And, you know, I think if you can get some of that infrastructure money, that's a great way to go. It's not easy to do it, but it's, you know, it doesn't happen by not applying. You gotta, you gotta apply to get it. So, and I don't know, I mean, Forrest can believe that probably, because you've done a lot of that.
Andy, this is, Andy, this is Mick Aspern. And I agree with you, go. I think we need a meeting put together between the county, the city, DOT, you guys. I think try to get this thing resolved and try to get us working together.
Well, I think that'd be great, and I really think the DOT ought to be at the table because, you know, they get all sorts of federal funds. And I like to have them at the table so you can say, what pocket, you know, what might you have to help us on some of it?
The last thing I recall is $50,000 on this, $700,000 on Project Forrest, is that right?
But you gotta keep asking, you know.
That's all they had at that point.
Yeah.
Everything else, well, I mean, again, it falls back on the same people.
Here's what I call it, positive persistent. One day they might not have it, but the next day they might. So I think, I think we should have that meeting if you guys are up and willing for it. In the end, you gotta do what you gotta do, you're the decision maker, the buck stops here.
Let's try to schedule that.
Okay. Are you guys willing to?
Let's see if we get ahead of ourselves.
Okay, okay.
You know, I mean, we're not unwilling to do it, but I think, and I'm not gonna speak for everybody else, but you know, I was up here six years ago whenever they did this, I'm kinda catching up on the internet, you know, from a lot of different people's stuff. But at this point, you know, it's kind of like we've been put into this position. It's not for lack of trying, I don't think. I think Mick went up there in good faith, you know, trying to work something out. I applauding for that, I wouldn't have not known how to do that. But now here we are in this situation, now everybody's saying, hey, wait, you know, you may get these magical federal funds. We don't know that for sure. So what do we do? What do we do for the citizens of our town? That's who we have to look out for, you know? Do we want them to be driving on these roads? Do we want anybody else to be driving on these roads like this? No, we don't. But what do we do? What's the solution now? We need to do something now, it's been six years at least since they've been talking about this, and two years since you and I have been on here, Christina, that this has been going. So that's eight years. And what do you do now? So I really think something needs to be done now, whether it's a temporary solution, you know? If something needs to get worked out, you know, on all these opinions, I don't know.
I'd like to see.
I think this is a two-part project also. I think there's two pieces to this puzzle. A, we're looking at where you want a road. And B, we're looking at how are we gonna prevent that road from falling back into the same spot it was in? So we're looking at repairing it, and then on the other side, we're also looking at turning restrictions. So there's two pieces to this. I mean, for me, I mean, I see it in repairing it is one thing, working with the county to repair it and how we're gonna pay for it, that's one part of it. But then we're also looking at how are we gonna save our taxpayers' dollars by not having to go and bear the same expense down the road and prevent it from happening? But maybe we don't have to look that far if we can come together with the county and not have to bear the expense all on our pocketbook.
And my concern is if we do something, even a fix, and it gets done, then nothing happens.
That's a Band-Aid.
Then, well, but I understand that, Mick, and I agree with you on that. And I don't like putting a Band-Aid on it anymore than you do, but if we do that, then nothing happens with the county.
Well, let me ask you a question. What's it gonna hurt to let this go another month and have that meeting?
Why don't we do both? Why don't we give Forrest the authority to move forward on this and also have a meeting?
Because I'm not sure that this is.
I wasn't done, I wasn't done talking. So if you could get this, moving forward with Forrest with the components in that presentation, and also allow the meeting to evolve, and if there's an alternative that comes about, great, we'll put the brakes on.
Are you talking, moving forward on just the road and then holding off on the turning part of it? And see what we can come up with? Or moving forward with all of it?
Pursue the $200,000 overlay.
I agree.
Just to add, Vic, in this year with October being a time period, with the drainage improvements that Jim wanted, and then we adopt the turning restrictions, that's in the presentation on page 13, allow Forrest to begin permanent design for that if needed, adopt the truck route map as presented, put that last page in the utility memo, and then adopt the special meetings. And Steve's asked, just so I could, adopt the special meetings in August that allow us to ratify that. And if we do that, that takes us about a month. So it gets to what Terry said, so then it gives everybody a month. If something else comes about, great, if not, we're still.
I'd like to hold off on these turning restrictions. Only because, hold on, let me find.
Only because, hold on, let me finish.
I started first, Christina.
Poet has a great recommendation that implementing these turning restrictions without having Steve look at the new material could, could potentially put us in a rough spot. And I don't want to spend.
But let it go.
Yeah. And I don't want to put us in a position where we're going to be having a ton of litigation and expending more money than if we give this gentleman a time to talk to Steve Brick and see if Steve.
So then put Steve and Andy on the same boat.
Well, that's fine. But I'm saying, I don't want to implement or to even talk about these turning restrictions until Andy has had a chance to talk to Steve Brick. Because I think it's gonna potentially put us in a litigation that we don't want to be in. So if we give Steve the opportunity to review this new information that Jason and Andy have brought, and maybe hold off on the turning part of it, but continue on the road, and just see what Steve has to say going forward.
Could you repeat that?
You want me to repeat it? Because I would like Steve to be, to look over this information that Jason and Andy has just provided us to make sure that he is still of the same opinion that he has given us before. Because I don't want him to be giving an opinion when he's not fully informed. And if there's information he hasn't seen, we don't want to go down a road of litigation. Because it's costly, very costly. And it's, could be a waste of time if you could just work it out between attorneys.
That's could be ideal. But I mean, again, again, it goes back to the timeline of Mike mentioned. I mean, it's.
You know what? That's fine. I would see spending $250,000 on a Band-Aid.
There was a talking about the, I was talking about the turning restrictions.
And that $250,000 gets prepared to fix the road right away. Whether it costs us, whether it costs taxpayers, whoever, whoever it costs.
So it's okay to raise taxes?
There's a cost.
So it's okay to raise taxes to fix this road, Nick?
Brian, shut up!
I love muting. That's it. Muting. Kick him out.
No.
Yeah, you can't talk, you can't talk to people like that.
Can't do that.
You let people talk like that. You let people talk like that. You let Brian talk like that. You let Brian talk like that to me.
People, shut up.
You let Brian.
I'm right on the meeting, Teresa. Mute him now.
Whoa, the X P really started doing it?
You know.
Any more questions for me?
I do not have any more questions for you. Thank you for your presentation.
Teresa?
I have a question.
Councilman?
Bless. Thank you. I just don't understand why there's hesitation to spit in the face of this wonderful suggestion to have great minds, knowledgeable minds, come together to work on this situation. Instead of thinking that we are the know-it-all, the do-it-all right now, and we want it done our way. By golly, we want it done right now. I think that's just asinine. And I don't understand why we, as a council, are not willing to just step back. We don't need to pay Beanstrand, Kim, for another month's work. Let's just step back and say, let's table this for a month and see if we can get this meeting together, get all these good brains working on it, and come back next month and look at it from a fresh perspective. I move that we do that.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Lisa Glass to table like.
For one month.
One month.
And in that month, to set up a meeting with certainly Guthrie, hopefully Adair, Mick Asgren, and Mike. Are you willing to be on, Mike? Calvo? And Warren Apisa, willing to do it as a volunteer citizen? And let's take a look at this big situation. And then in the, the end of that month, come back in September and see what we got.
Okay, we have a motion. Let me see, oh, a second.
So, you know, with, with, with all you said there, Teresa, you know, you don't understand the hesitancy. But I think if you look back over history, just seeing that, you know, the attempts made to reach out to the county to do this, even since I've been on the county, on the council, the attempts to figure out some solution, nobody's really put forth any kind of an attempt at any suggestion other than Brian, he's brought stuff up. And every time that's brought up, it's something evil, you know? And now we're in this position, and we want to wait another month without doing anything, you know? So then we're just another month later, you know? What, do I believe that the city and the county should work together? Yeah. I don't know why the animosity there. Seems like children, both sides, you know? And it shouldn't be that way. But that's what it seems like, you know? There's no construct. So, so that's the hesitancy of just not doing anything and waiting a month, you know? If we start doing something, who knows? Maybe they'll, maybe they'll be more willing to work with us, you know? I don't know. Maybe not, you know? But we gotta do something. We can't just say, well, we're gonna have meetings. We don't know if this money's gonna come through. Honestly, we're, right? It sounds great. It's pie in the sky, you know? That would be great. I'd love to get it. But we don't know if it's gonna come through. That's the bottom line. That's it, you know? So.
Can I make a motion?
I'd make, I'd make, can I, I guess.
As long as we can lay the turning lanes out of it until next month.
I'm open to modifying this. Terry, that's for you two. You want to chime in on this? I'm all for it. We adopted option one last time. I'm still wanting to move forward with option one personally because it ensures something gets done. Because this road's not safe. It's got ruts. And financial two is, or option two is financially stupid. Option one at least gets us something going and allows Forrest the chance to be able to move forward with the contractors in calendar 2021. Includes the drainage needs that Cory and Jim brought up as well. And then as far as the turning restrictions, I would, I'm okay tabling that for a month. Or actually, maybe not a month. I mean, Steve gave us a prescribed list of, or dates to enact the resolution or ordinance. And, and if anybody will, I'll get through the rest of this. But if anybody wants to object or change this, I'm open to it. But if we want to back off on that, that's fine. I'm not opposed to moving forward with it if we need to at all, if there's no resolution. But, so we get that done, implements revised truck routes, I guess that's part of the turning restrictions. We revisit that in the month, this next meeting. And I, I'd like that last page course in your presentation to go on the utility bills. So all the residents are aware of this background. So there, there's information that's available. And then I guess that's, so that's what, one part. Part two would be that this meeting that you're talking about, that you two would be on it. There's an election in November. If there's additional details that come about, that they're not wanting to, you know, work together, we can't, or there's a bigger project they're looking at, and so it drags on, you two are the only go forwards. So to me, it makes sense that you two participate with the mayor. I turn it up too. I'm just, I'm just saying.
The only part of that, I like that motion, except for I'd like to just wait at least a couple of weeks on those turning restrictions. Yeah, I want, I want Andy to have a conversation with Steve and just make sure that Steve and him are on the same page and on the same, I mean, because we all know, one attorney may think one thing, another attorney may interpret it another way. I mean, that's just the way it works.
And maybe there's some resolution that comes from that discussion.
And, and have Jason involved in those conversations. So maybe all three are on the same page. So I'd like to, at least the turning part, just push it off and make sure we're on the same page.
And I'm not putting that on the motion, but it is two-part. It is moving forward with Forrest and then also trying to schedule this discussion supervising.
Perfectly okay with that.
Removed and seconded. So no, I didn't, seconded, seconded, okay. How do you go? Veldon?
Yes.
Ranzel?
Yes.
Glass?
No.
Calvo?
Yes.
Do you maintain a five-minute recess?
Yes.
Yes?
Congratulations.
I hope you're fine.
Yes.
All I know. Because I'm in our, my situation that is.
I don't know. I don't even know.
I'm not gonna give that to you. So motions, I think, didn't get everything in them because of the talking. I just. Is that gonna take them enough time to talk to Andy? It should only take a couple of hours.
Yes, please. You ever made a semi on a gravel road?
Thank you. We'll start the meeting again. At this point, we're gonna table on five B and C.
So I'd make that motion to table B and C and then give Steve and Andy a chance to speak and tentatively put a meeting together next Monday.
Is he gonna speak with Jason too to make sure that Jason's the engineer?
Let them, yeah, just let them.
Josh, sorry, Josh.
Yeah, but give them, instead of taking five minutes, let them meet. So we can tentatively schedule next Monday until like 5:30.
Six.
Well, that's fine. Does that work? Terry?
I'll do 6:30 and keep it the same as the previous meeting.
Six is fine. 5:30 pushes traffic for me. Next Monday?
Yes. So, move around the table. Second, second one. Calvo? How do you go? Veldon?
Yes.
Ranzel?
Yes.
Glass?
Yes.
Calvo?
Yes.
Six, Carl Chevrolet.
So Forrest, I'll show you again, back up here again. So Carl Chevrolet has submitted a site plan. And they are looking to install a concrete parking lot. It would be a private parking lot for storage of their vehicles. He would go out there. So you have car on the north side, Southwest Eight. There's actually quite a few cars already stored in the grass out there where this would go. This would be turning that into a parking lot. The, I think in your council packets was a comment letter that I had dated August 9th from this morning, maybe. I don't, I don't know how much that's everybody.
It's on the table.
Okay, all right. So Civil Design Advantage, who is the engineer that is working for Carl Chevrolet, submitted revised plans in response to these comments late this afternoon. And the, there were four items I had on there. One was some technical information about stormwater drainage. Those have been addressed. So I don't have any concerns about that. There were three other concerns. One was about the lighting, making sure that the lighting was not shining into the residents that are to the north of this proposed parking lot. The other is they are requesting to put up an eight-foot-high chain-length fence with privacy slats. So that would, yes. Yep. So that, that was approved by signing and zoning unanimously. But that would need your waiver from the city council to allow that. Because the code that we have requires that to be solid, like the wood fence that's there now between Carl Chevrolet and the residents. This is a change from that.
Is there a reason for that?
I, I'm gonna, I'm going to, as soon as I'm done, I'm gonna turn it over to Nick with Civil Design Advantage. and she's going to answer the questions, uh, that you may have about these items and the... Any other items that you have. And then the third item, uh, is that, uh, when this went to planning and zoning, this was... There's a dry storm log retention basin that was proposed just to the west of Carl's building out there between the parking lot. Um, it fills up when it rains, but it would be normally dry. They had changed that and they're proposing that that be a wet pond. So, it would be a pond full of water all the time. And then, uh, when you get a rainfall, the pond would fill up higher and then would go back down, but there would always be water in that pond.
It's a... Yeah. Is that like...
I will... I will let Nikki answer questions about the pond and the fence and the lighting.
The reason I ask about that is because the one pond we did allow, I've got those notes because you can't see anywhere around it, so if a kid falls in it, you... I mean...
I know, so I'm gonna let...
Yeah. It's not being... I'm sure that wouldn't be the same place as Carl because everything Carl's done's been impactful, but I'm just saying, that's the reservation.
Of course, I have a couple of questions for you when you're done.
Oh. We can... You wanna ask them?
Okay, so, um, when I was reading through the P and Z minutes, um, you had some concern about the vacated streets.
The concern I had on the vacated streets was Beacon on the vacated streets has the south half of those being owned by Carl, but the north half of those streets are... Are owned by the adjoining property owners and Beacon, or I think Nikki confirmed that that Beacon is correct, and so the landscaping, everything's been pulled off of that property.
Okay. Um, so, this lot is where Daika was going to previously be, right? And we...
That's right.
When I was looking back at this, I had... I was pretty positive that we had only vacated those contingent on Daika, but when I go back and looked at this, it was... It wasn't. So, I think there was some miscommunication there, but I... I cleared that up. So, what you're saying is when we vacated those streets, they didn't... Did they not get completely vacated for the whole property?
They did. They are completely vacated, but the north parts of them, up by Seventh Street, went to the adjoining property owners on either side, not to Daika or Carl Chevrolet. They... They... If that makes sense.
Yeah.
The south part went to the adjoining... So, up there went...
How does this cause... I'm not probably... How does this cause?
It was just a... It was just, uh, the originals... One of the original versions of the site plan had that, oh, owned by Carl and...
Just wasn't...
Land's... He wasn't sure anything.
Okay.
Wasn't.
So, uh, my... My next question is, um, the utili... Has anybody talked to utilities and are they... I mean, I heard some scuttle that there was some issues there and Pat had some questions regarding things going into this with utilities. Has that been resolved or is that still ongoing?
Uh, so, I've been talking to Pat about the utilities. There's a water main that, uh, they're going north-south to the property. That water main is going to stay. The easement is staying with it. And there were... There's, uh, if you go out there, you can see these boxes kind of... Eight out in the... In there. And I'll address that. I think that's been addressed between CDA and how I... There was a conversation that was held.
So, my last question is, it says on one side issue, the tornado siren is being moved. Is that correct?
Correct.
Has anybody talked to the fire department or the EMA?
It's moving this far.
But is there gonna be a length of time that that siren's gonna be down?
I would... I would... That'd be a question for CDA as well.
Yeah.
But... You've been answering everything.
That's all I have.
Okay. So, I will turn it over, uh, to Nikki Neal from Civil Design Advantage and she can answer, or Tony, I guess.
Well, Tony, I'm saying Christina, back to your point about the closed road, but that was contingent upon very construction. Otherwise, it was real... That was closed.
But it didn't get... My point is that the motion did get...
Correct.
It... There may have been some overtalking or whatever and then, I mean, that's partly on us because when we went and reviewed this, that Beverly prepared, we missed it, but she also missed it. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
So, what you're seeing is phase one of two phases. Um, so, the property that we're talking is the westernmost piece of ground that we own prior to purchasing the remainder of the ground from Daika. Um, that is our facility for auction, so we part there with Cox Automotive, Manheim. Um, the reason for the expansion, the first phase is, um, we brought on some other dealer partners. Obviously, as you can see out there today, there's a lot more vehicles, um, so there's a lot more going through that property. To address the fence question, the reason is, um, it... One, it's a cost savings on our part instead of having to put up two fences. Um, we will address, you know, with vegetation behind, uh, the fences, as you see, um, but it's really just from a standpoint of, uh, safety for the vehicles. Um, and we don't have to bear the expense of putting in a fence, then putting in vegetation and putting in another fence. So, um, if we can put in the slats, there's already the properties, uh, the two properties, uh, to the north, uh, they have, uh, I guess, older trees and bushes and there's a garage on the back of one of them. So, I mean, we're... I mean, there's already kind of cover there for the ground. Um, and then, real quick, I'll address, uh, the ground around the pond. Um, you got there today, uh, you look at how we maintain the facility. Nothing's gonna be overgrown. The field is overgrown, they just mowed it. Um, but as we, you know, obviously, if we take over and... And develop... Develop this ground, it'll be... I'll make sure of what we do anywhere, um, for any facility that we have, so...
You try to... Your record shows.
Yeah, it'll be mowed, it'll be seeded, it'll be overseeded, um, so...
And the depth of the pond won't be...
Uh, that'll... I'll let Nikki address that. That's an engineering question that I'll have her address, so... Um, but the reason for the fence is, one, to create privacy so that you really can't see through the fence, but also for us not to incur the expense of having to put up two fences plus trees and vegetation and bushes. You know, that's a three-layer barrier that, you know, really becomes compromised to us, so...
So, and P and Z approved this?
Announced, yes. About the fence, yes. They announced it first.
Any, uh, any variants? Okay. Yeah. Thank you, Tony.
Yep, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Tony. Hi, Nikki Neal of CDA. Um, so, pond questions, that's one first you want answered.
Sure.
So, our minimum pond depth is always ten feet. That's what we need just to maintain and hold water. So, this one sits around, I wanna say twelve is what I believe, twelve to fifteen, so the deepest part, and I'm saying it's not very big.
And that was been on the plans presented to P and Z as well?
That is, you'll have the plans right in front of you.
No, but I mean, they... They addressed that issue or... Or that was part of...
Nope. P and Z did not see the pond, the physical wet bottom pond. So, that came into play just a matter of working through utilities, maintaining cover on utilities. Um, so, then also came into stormwater questions, having that foot of freeboard. And then even into, um, when it comes to a matter of the dirt, the fill that you need on the site in order to raise this up, well, obviously, raising up to a certain point, that's gonna be quite costly. So, trying to kind of balance that out and even it out, so beating the pond generally is gonna be the most cost-effective.
They're gonna have some barrier around the pond?
So, as of now, there's not a barrier around the pond.
So, P and E really does... Or P and Z really needs to look at that.
To me, we have privilege, should be contingent upon them reviewing the updates at that... Uh, whatever changes that they had versus what you have now, just that they could look at those. I mean, it's ju... It's just the pond or the street deal as well?
Um, so, the street deal, they were aware that it was basically just pulling the property line.
Okay, so what changed between P and Z and now?
So, the plantings had gone all the way up to the north, so there was already discussion that they were aware of that those plantings were being pulled down and kind of lining where that fence was, that they were... We were gonna beef up that kind of the buffer along with that fence with the slats. So, they were aware of that. And then, uh, the pond, they were not aware of.
Okay. I mean, I don't see any issue with it as long as P and Z gets a chance to look at the changes. I mean...
And utilities are comfortable with all the... I mean, it sounds like that they are, but... And then, my other question was the tornado siren. Um, has anybody just... I mean, have you guys had any discussion with the fire department or the emergency Guthrie County and Guthrie, Edire County and management about how long that siren's gonna go down? Because right now, we're in peak storm season and that's like a big thing out there. So, I don't... I just don't know if you've had discussions with the fire team and the EMA director in regards to that tornado siren?
Not specific discussions. So, um, I think that would come down to contractors for Tony and how they would end up coordinating that.
Well, I... I would like them to coordinate with those two people just because that's a big thing and they need to make sure that they're on the same page and we're aware of when it's going down and where it's being moved to and things of that sort.
Yeah, and that's always something like on our plans, we can make sure we add as a note for the contractor to coordinate with, you know, the specific people.
And we can leave it as simple, P and Z's don't get back together if they... If you guys call them and there's no objections to the sm... The limited changes, that's fine, too. As long as they get a chance to...
Yeah, I'm okay with that and as long as we coordinate with the fire chief and the...
Yeah.
The EMA director.
You know, pulling everybody together during the summer is harder, so... That's what...
I mean, those are easy phone calls.
Yeah. Is that okay?
Yeah. You know what?
So, what?
With, uh, glass? Second, Valden? Howdy, Valden. Yes. Renslow?
Yes.
Glass?
Yes.
Cobal?
Yes.
Thank you, Nikki.
Yeah. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, guys.
I just want to clarify, that's with the waiver with the bets, correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Then P and Z looked at that, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it weird, I think, I mean, we're okay with everything except for any changes that P and Z hadn't looked at, we can try to get.
I just think that waiver should be part of the, make sure that's part of the motion.
Okay.
If that's, if that's okay.
We will put that in motion.
Thank you.
Seven, Hotel Stewart?
Do we need to help?
We really need to help, yeah. Okay. Somebody talk to him. Okay.
Seven, you know, first, uh, saving, uh, A is a community capitalist grant. We are micro project grant to the west peninsula of micro project grant when we got it. And since didn't work out, so we have to turn it down because the grant is subject to, uh, you having to do something. So I want to make sure that we establish that privilege that in order to, we're gonna have a motion to approve and accept the grant.
Sure.
But the grant can go forward unless you vote swede and do what you gotta tell us.
Yeah, sure.
Right, so good on that?
Yep.
So we have a motion to accept A.
Oh, wait, hold on.
Uh, A, we're gonna accept the grant subject to him.
Right, to him doing.
Doing what he has.
Because if we accept that, he doesn't do it, we don't.
We don't, we turned it down before.
But how do we know?
Kristen was here, where he has his shoes of classes.
There, there's certain, certain timelines with the grant. I also was voted on another project that you have to win. So there's a, a two-year timeline, there's certain restrictions on the type of construction and sustainable design and different, different checklist you have to go through if the developer and the general contractor and things to, to meet, uh, the, the grant, basically criteria.
And that's into the whole idea because we turned it down before Kristen was here because the things didn't work out with the previous developer that he can't deal with, yeah.
I remember that.
Yeah.
And so we're making the motion and he's, I mean, Mr. Austin is okay with moving forward and making sure that we did.
So we're on the same page?
Yes, we're on the same page.
Sure.
So I mean, we're on the same page, our money's the last money in, right?
Yeah, this is from the state, so basically the state turns it over to the city, but the city, basically, you're, you're also.
Yeah, do you have like a project or something with this that you?
We do, we submitted everything.
What do you mean, you share with us?
Um, I didn't have anything financial tonight to share, but we submitted, uh, you probably have copies of everything we submitted for the catalyst grant, you have to submit everything.
Okay.
Yeah, the catalyst grant is, is approved, we got the hundred thousand, we make a motion to accept it subject.
But we have matching under, matching under requirements, right?
Uh, I don't seem to have a matching requirement, we just have to vote with.
I think we, we had back in January under discussion before I bought the hotel.
Okay, but something, something there needs to involve and Ash and Matt would work with you on whatever that would be.
You need the criteria for that, basically.
All of the games, I just want to make sure with as well as the will, that we've turned the grant down.
Previously, yeah, I think with the All Saints Center, there was some sort of.
I think we got the catalyst grant and then we're, and then, uh, Tom Small was still trying to work on buying it from the estate and then he wasn't able to, to complete it because of things that had happened. And so we ended up turning it down, is that the way I remember this? Because it was before Mike and I were on the council.
Yes.
So is there, can you share your plans, I mean, what your timeframe is and, uh, guy, I know I talked to you on the phone about different potential restaurants to go in there and stuff and it's hard to.
Will you use those motions before we do that?
Yeah, that's kind of what I, I did a small presentation, just kind of review.
He has a little suggestion, he just accepted the grant subject to the classes.
I'll make that motion.
Second to move.
Oh, sorry.
Second one. You seconded it. You already made the motion.
Oh, I didn't even.
You did, you're right.
Second by Renslow.
Yep.
So how do you go, Beldon?
Yes.
Renslow?
Yes.
Glass?
Yes.
Calvo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now this is part B.
Me now.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate your time, Senator Mayor, Councilor. So my name is Matt Austin with Black Swan Developers and, uh, so we purchased the hotel after, you know, some discussions with the city back, uh, at the end of the year, basically. Um, so we purchased the hotel, we're also developing the hotel, um, and trying to, trying to give them a national register. So it's, it's not a, um, small task, basically, because there's a lot of other restrictions besides a catalyst grant when you're trying to maintain, um, historical significance. Alright, so I put together just a, a short, um, a few half dozen slides to just kind of walk you through the, the project. So I don't know, Michael, if you don't mind going to the next one. Um, the, the fascinating thing is just, um, I know it's, you know, you guys are all used to this and everything else, but a year ago, when first, uh, my wife and I were driving north through town, just happening to be driving through Stewart, and we came to the four-way stop and we looked over, she's like, hey, take it right here, what, you know, what is that? Um, so we drove over to table looking, it's, you know, for sale and, and, I mean, just fascinated by the structure, right, by the, by the hotel. Um, of course, then we started digging into it and finding out what conditions, you know, and, uh, how creative, uh, you have to be to try to develop a property like this. Um, but it's just, um, how it's laid out with the city and the historical, obviously, um, history behind the, the building, the hotel, depot, and just everything else, it's just fascinating. Um, so I, we've been to, you know, we purchased the, the hotel back in January and probably been in town maybe six, eight times since then to work on basically measuring, working on the architectural engineering, uh, for the project. But every single time, um, we've been at the, the hotel, we've looked down, it's like, does somebody come in the building, you know what's going on? If somebody's stopping to take pictures of it. I mean, I, and, and it's just fascinating to me, it's like, okay, so this is, I mean, there's a lot of, a strong historicness, you know, but it's, it's well-known, basically. And it's just fascinating that all these people want to stop, take pictures with it. And we're, we're thinking if we can develop this thing into something of, of business in there that can attract, you know, I know there's going to be, uh, clientele coming into, into this, right? Just all these people fascinated with history, so, um, Michael, you have Michael with the next one. Um, the, obviously, I think everybody's well-known, you know, as far as the history on it and the first floor being, you know, renovated, um, these are the interior pictures of the second floor. So basically, the first floor, um, to finish that, um, and get a commercial business in, we think we could do it fairly quickly. Um, you know, there's obviously a kitchen build out there, and there's still work to be done and there's, uh, the current condition of it's not entirely known until we get all the utilities turned back on. Um, but we feel like we can get the first floor utilized pretty quickly. It's the second floor, um, it's just, you know, in a different, uh, state or environment, so it's, it's pretty rough, the basin also needs a lot of work, uh, the roof needs some work. Um, but this kind of just gives you an overview of what the current condition is.
Is the foundation okay?
Uh, it needs some, it needs a little bit of work, um, downstairs, so we, uh, the other thing too, we're trying to partner with local contractors, um, Jeff Mark is on board as far as being our general contractor on the project, we're trying to hire local, um, crews.
Sure.
So I think it's, you know, he's got some history with the building too as far as doing some development, so.
So you're, and, and again, if you're not one to talk about this right now, that's fine, but you mentioned a project budget with the catalyst grant that went a while ago.
Yep.
Can you refer to ballpark numbers and timeframes and what you're looking at?
Yeah, so I, I think originally back in January, we had a different contractor on board at that time. Um, you know, overall budget on there was, I think we were up at five sixty-four-ish all in, um, and that's when we originally talked to the city.
That's when we submitted this then, right?
Yeah, that's when we submitted this and that was part of the deal with the city, you know, um, asking if, if we were successful in catalyst grant as far as the city developer agreement would, would drop down at that time to a hundred thousand versus ten or fifty thousand. Um, the one thing, I've had several discussions with the county assessor on the, on the project, there is still a, um, a minimum assessment on the property, which falls back to the previous development agreement with Bert and, uh, Tom, basically. Um, typically, what would happen in a case like this, when we purchase the hotel itself for the value, we pay one thirty-five for it, um, the minimum assessment would drop down to one thirty-five. So then the, the tax base would drop down. Um, because that little minimum assessment and, you know, it's like a, well, we think we have a new agreement that we're working on as far as with the city, um, we thought we'll just keep it up at the two twenty-five, basically, the minimum assessment there until we figure something out.
And we have to remember that development agreement, um, at that time would just need to be refreshed with what Chip and Matt and, and, sorry, Ash, Matt and Chip worked together for refreshing that.
Sure, sure.
So.
Yep, so I, I mean, the catalyst grant is great, I mean, that's great, that's great news for everybody. And I think that's, you know, the one thing with minimum assessment, right, versus what we paid for it, you know, long-term, it's going to pay for it, you know, the developer agreement.
Yep.
So I mean, that's the whole point of these things.
Yes, absolutely.
So, um, Michael, you have Michael with the next one. Uh, this is rendering, so this is our plan for the back area, um, we love to create a network patio, um, terrace area that ideally, if we can, if we can have some food and beverage, uh, at least that first floor, this would be very outdoor space. So the idea is to, um, also get some privacy and a lot of landscaping around there, I think it just can be some beautiful space out there, um, both for the restaurant and then also, um, another section up to the north, we're thinking that can be for residents that have.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that. So you guys are aware that butts up to the back of the fire department's parking?
Yes, I mean, we've had discussions with, um, so the, uh, as far as the building, the city, uh, planning, city, um, permit, Jason.
Jason.
I was just thinking dust wise, you know, when the.
Yeah, so that's, that's kind of what.
Go to a call.
Yeah, so that was kind of the idea, would you create some, you know, shrubbery or, you know, um, some sort of landscape in there to help, you know, keep that down, um, and still provide the sentiment space in the back, I think it could be cool space.
It would be.
So you said five sixty-four, so funding is secured with the grant then?
Well, with the, yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, it's, it's on us, right, to, to.
That's what.
Get it all, yeah.
Everything's been secured before the grant with.
Yeah, I mean, with the grant and then the idea of having that city development.
Sure.
So that's kind of all plays into, that was kind of what we were.
I don't know if I can get to a number with that group, so.
And that's also the part two, when you're looking at lease the space, I know we've had discussions too about trying to attract some businesses, you know, trying to, you know, the market rate in Stewart, right, trying to make it so, you know, bind it for the business.
Yeah.
And, uh, and this project, so.
Hopefully, hopefully something can come about, yeah.
Yeah. Um, then it's one more. Um, so this is the first floor commercial spaces, the rendering we've done, um, at that time, thinking, okay, if we could get a cafe or some sort of, you know, bakery in there. Um, again, I think it's, it's natural and I mean, and discussions with white poller, that's the other thing, gee, I'm surprised all the traffic, and there's a ton of traffic on this, which you guys are all familiar with, but, you know, I was saying. Not the trucks.
Let's not talk about that, right?
But if, if a business in there, I just think that there's a, you know, I think it, you know, it's fascinating, really, I mean, as far as the volume of traffic out there, you look, if you could tap into that with a correct business. Um, so off to the left, um, the, that's the first floor and then the, the one above the second floor. Um, the first floor, so we have two different options. One, I have, um, discussions with, with somebody that's looking at an office space and they potentially take that right section there, um, and then we can split it up and then do, you know, hopefully food and beverage on the left side. Uh, the other option is to have one tenant come and take the whole space. So we're just trying to be creative, trying to, you know, trying to do what we can to attract somebody, um, for that space, so. You go to the, yeah, I mean, going back, I guess the one bolt one I had on there, I mean, ideally, I think from us and for you guys as well, creating a commercial space can bring people in, you know, where the city's actually in the use of people can hear and use the building. So I mean, that's, that's what we have in mind. Um, this is a, a mock-up of the apartments upstairs, so this is the change that we're working through with the state, um, as far as ship over in the National Park Service. Because we're looking at converting upstairs instead of keeping it as a hotel, um, into five apartments, um, so we have to work through all the design with them, they have to sign off on everything, and so this is a change. Um, but basically, we'd be creating two, two bedrooms, um, two one-bedrooms. And then the studio, we're thinking that, you know, maybe we could do some V O V O, some short-term if somebody's in town that has company in town, they want something nicer, you know, something a little nicer, stay in more, you know, weddings, you know, maybe we could, we could try doing some short-term rentals there and see if the market takes that or not.
There's a rental demand in town, that's.
Is there?
Yeah, big town. Unfortunately, that's the wrong floor that's, that's to finish.
Yeah, so I mean, that, and that's, I mean, we looked at too, I mean, if you can vary the first floor apartments, it'd certainly be, you know, a lot better for a project.
Yeah.
And I was good for the city, I don't think.
Sure, no, no, no.
Yeah, they used to be apartments in there.
Yeah, that's what somebody came to like, yeah, I wouldn't have done here.
Bay window one.
Did you really, huh? The prime spot.
Yeah. Where's the fire truck?
Short commute, right, to the fire station.
Yeah, I was on back then, I took them, but I was stuck.
So, um, so I mean, they're going to be beautiful apartments with the historical charm, so I mean, if, if they're going to be very little apartments, um, but that's, that's kind of the plan right now, they're working, um, through, we've sent off to Jason's, looked at drawings and, and he's on board too, so. Um, Michael, if you have the next one, please. If there's another one, is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
Next one was really good.
Where's, where are these people going to park?
Okay, so, um, that's, we talked to Kristen at the, uh, previously and she didn't think it was an issue around there either, you know, the street parking here across the street, um, you know, that's.
And in the winter?
In the winter? Yeah, I mean, it's still, I mean.
We don't street parking on the winter.
Okay, so there's no, oh, okay. And, and the other thing, she thought it wouldn't be an issue, and I guess I, you know, I can take this up, you know, whatever, but also with the, the parking in the back, the rental parking, the city parking lot in the back, is that an issue as far as parking there?
I don't know where it sits compared to there, I mean, you get a big fire call and you've got a lot of cars in there.
And something just needs to be looked at.
Yeah, I mean, it's just looking at your designs, I was just thinking.
Is there, is there an issue over here as far as parking, I mean, that's still very close.
Generally, they just park off the cement part back there, so they're, they're farther east.
Okay.
Uh, you have one truck that we have on the, uh, north side that comes out, uh, out there and that's, uh, it's a pickup.
Okay.
You know, uh, I would, right now, I would say there's plenty of room, but you, you know.
Sure.
Just something to consider.
I just want to, because we ran in this problem with Masonic Temple and the owner of Masonic Temple not having had a foot parking and then wanting to come to the city and ask for parking, so I just wanted to put that out there before we got too far.
Just something to address.
Yeah.
You know, considering your plans.
And it's, it's limited, I mean, obviously from that site plan, right, what do you do then, do you, you know, on the north side?
But yeah, I mean, this part, no, it's not that.
Valid point though, because I mean, all of the overflow, he, he's, you know, landlocked and.
Still doing something, I don't care.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
So do you need to get any next steps from us on this development agreement revision?
Um, I, I think it's just with Ash and their timeframe, I guess, as far as what they want to do.
Are you okay with it? You guys are going to grow up and go.
We have Matt, um, to work with us, so.
We'll, we'll. Matt's our university.
Okay. Alright, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Eight, Resolution twenty-one, twenty C.
Chip, I'd put you on the spot, but we'll preach, this was all you, so I'm going to give the public kudos as we don't do enough. Um, what was the, uh, tax reduction by establishing this?
Percentage from last week?
Two dollars percentage.
This is the insurance part we talked about.
It's, it's approximately, um. About fifteen percent.
About fifteen percent reduction, so everybody's property values are going up, you know, we, we worked hard to establish a fifteen percent reduction, the mortgage might do so, so anyway.
They gave in four thousand dollars under, the debt service is four thousand under the, uh, budgeted pre-letting amount, so there's a savings there from, from the interest cost too.
Okay.
Um, the loans, the direct placement loans with, uh, First Day Advantage Stewart at one point two five percent, so they were very good to work with, with this on that, so.
And this is a one-year note, paid off.
One-year note paid off.
Done. And you repeat this process to realize that tax reduction each year, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Need a motion?
So, so.
Second. Let's go on. Renslow, second by Glass.
How do you vote, Beldon? Renslow?
Yes.
Glass?
Yes.
Calvo?
Yes.
Thanks, Chip.
Thank you. Mid-American Energy Franchise, we've already hit one reading, this will be the second reading.
I'll second that.
Move by Calvo, second by Renslow, how do you vote, Beldon?
Yes.
Renslow?
Yes.
Glass?
Who are we voting on, Mid-American Franchise?
We've already done the first three.
The second reading?
This is the second.
This is the last one, isn't it?
No.
Second, second.
Did anybody talk to Mid-American, uh, Service South Leader, Steven?
Yes, so if we have, if we have four, we don't need to do it again. Okay, so this is the last one.
I have any answer to that, I think, after we finish this.
We got, this is second, we got the wave, the third, the bucket. Did Teresa vote?
Well, this is, I, this is the second reading.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
You need a motion?
And Calvo?
Yes.
Okay, now, the third and final wave?
Need a motion.
Need a motion.
Move.
Move by Beldon, second by Renslow, how do you vote, Beldon?
Yes.
Renslow?
Yes.
Glass?
Well, you know, I have some questions about this, but I'm coming in a little bit late now, seeing them.
We've done it.
Um, I mean, the term eminent domain, we're, we're giving away a lot with eminent domain, because the gas franchise, is that what we're talking about?
The franchise fee.
It's a fee.
We're not doing any of that.
Okay. Move by Beldon, second by Renslow.
So, how do you vote, Beldon?
Yes.
Renslow?
Yes.
Glass?
Yeah.
Calvo?
Yes.
So the answer to your question, Warren, um, at our last meeting, the gentleman from Mid-American was on the phone because he was caught up in that traffic. He said he's not the person that can answer it, but he was supposed to get with somebody from the city, remember?
This was to the south.
Yeah, Warren has got service to the south, but I don't remember who the gentleman said he was going to refer us to, to figure that out, and he said he had to look at some stuff.
Yeah, he said he would look at something, but he hasn't been able to.
Is there somebody that can follow up with him? Does that answer your question? I mean, we started the conversation, he said he was going to look into it, I just don't think there's been any follow-up.
Put your development guy on that now.
There you go. Because you don't have enough to do right now.
Eight, Chip?
Uh, so, uh, Council of Development asked me to review some, you know, last principally, for me, it was on last year's, that was the part of the tax organ application refunding. There was also a four hundred thousand dollar new money financing funded, uh, a couple of police vehicles, uh, as, as we kind of move into the process of starting to look at this year's TIP certification and the budget process. We wanted to look at, I think, just to get a, kind of recap a little bit of, of how that debt service on last year's, on the four hundred thousand new money piece is intended to be paid, as well as Ash had, and you should review this probably in mind. There were proceeds that are left unspent from the twenty nineteen financing for All Saints Edition, you still have those proceeds available?
Yeah.
Because a project didn't occur?
Yeah.
I don't know the background of that.
We allocated hundred twenty thousand for a street project, that hasn't happened yet.
So that's available, with that in mind, the proposal is to fund a portion, if this proceeds, to fund a portion of those costs with those remaining proceeds from the twenty nineteen financing. And then apply road use tax dollars for some operational funding support. What's, what's all, what's proposed to be available then is, is on the budgetary note to fund debt service from road use tax, uh, for the debt service in twenty-two, twenty-three, and you want to get some more background?
Yeah, and this is really, it's, there's really two, so this is a bond issue we took out that I'd like to have my boot back on, frankly, but, so we, we did this bond issue not knowing where COVID was going to go and we needed, um, the police department had, you know, put a proposal together on some needs that had been overlooked for a while and we needed to, um, expand that department and meet those needs. So we voted, but we didn't run it through the process, which is figuring out how something's going to be funded, so we did it backwards, Kristen luckily got that cat, or cops grant, so we pledged to do this without a tax increase. So, so option A, am I right saying this, yeah, option A, uh, provides no tax increase, option B is a tax increase, and so, um, this is just to illustrate that. So the first year we did this, Ash was able to meet the payment with one-time state-funded money, um, correct?
Uh, he's a.
Correct. So this time, there's a reallocation available to us to meet this payment without raising taxes by reallocating the funds that they've worked out. So I just wanted everybody to, to see that because we, again, we said we weren't raising taxes to meet this, um, obligation, so that's part A. Am I jumping on the subject?
Right.
Okay. And then the last, the second couple of bullet points are, he's got those in there just to show where we've, uh, allocated infrastructure improvements from, uh, sewer lining and such. So do you want to run through B?
Um, so B is a proposed funding framework for the, for the rescue unit vehicle. I, I'm assuming the council all knows about this, the estimated cost is a hundred and seventy thousand, the debt service on that's proposed to be funded from, from the Mid-American Franchise Fee.
So if we didn't, I'm sorry, I don't want me to jump in here, but back, if we back, if we back up to number nine, we're able to fund the rescue unit because of what we voted on at number nine, which is a, um, franchise fee instead of a tax increase. So we, recharge them five percent, gas franchise fee, lower taxes fifteen percent, we're not able to raise taxes to fund the rescue. Makes sense?
Yes.
Okay. Then two, um, Jim has brought up for several months the need for street, or, yeah, street equipment, and so by using the sewer funded road use tax, we're able to, um, to buy, it's about two and a quarter, two hundred twenty-five thousand for, um, equipment he's needing, dump truck, bobcat, I think, were the primary kinds.
I don't think it's months, I think it's been years.
Well, I'm sure, yeah, I'm not doubting it. But anyway, those, again, that's, none of these items on here are, they're funded with revenue streams other than a tax increase, so.
That's really it? Just wanted to get this in front of the council so everybody's on the same page.
Thank you, Chip.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to, um, proceed with this bond issue, um, and then this financial framework, both A and B, so there's clearly no tax increase for it.
Okay, move by Beldon?
Second.
Second by Renslow, how do you vote, Beldon?
Yes.
Renslow?
Yes.
Glass?
Yes.
Calvo?
Yes.
Okay, eleven. Ordinance number nineteen oh three C.
That's for the money we get from those ranches versus.
And it shows them all, doesn't it?
Need a motion? As the first to be.
I'll make a motion.
Eighteen, uh?
Second.
Okay.
Move by, to a second.
So how do you vote, Beldon?
Yes.
Renslow?
Yes.
Glass?
Yes.
Calvo?
Yes.
Second.
Okay.
Move.
Move by Beldon, second by Calvo. How do you vote, Beldon? Renslow?
Yes.
Glass?
Yes.
Calvo?
Yes.
Okay, make a motion to waive the third and final.
What vote? Second.
It doesn't matter, uh, move by Christina.
Calvo, how do you vote, Beldon?
Yes.
Renslow?
Yes.
Glass?
Yes.
Calvo?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution number twenty nineteen oh three C, approving the cigarette permit.
Is there a way to stagger this, I mean, we.
We're all stacking this, just having this.
No, I mean.
We're all going to gather one resolution, but this one just.
This isn't setting the permit, these, and this doesn't do anything to that.
No, that's cigarette in a way, we approved them seven two. We usually have a quantity here, I know a solution, but this just came up.
They're taking over for it. Who's got to be?
Philip.
Oh, the show, oh, oh, yeah. Really?
They're just having, usually doesn't happen.
Okay.
Move by Beldon?
Second.
Second by Calvo, how do you vote, Beldon?
Yes.
Renslow?
Yes.
Glass?
Yes.
Calvo?
Yes.
Economic Development Director, Mr. Matt Funk.
Welcome, Mr. Funk.
Welcome.
Okay, uh, what we have here, we've got, uh, three TIP proposals. The first one is a proposal of business for Matt Tierney and Mike Tierney to purchase two one two northeast Second Street, currently a private storage facility. Uh, TIP funds go towards renovations of buildings to be used for new appliance sales location and a real estate brokerage office. TIP rebate amount of twelve thousand five hundred per year for four years for a total of fifty thousand dollars. Minimum assessment agreement to be, uh, what, uh, it's going to be, it's going to go up with the minimum assessment. Next one we have is, oh wait, also the legal expenses, could all be incurred by the developer, and the conditions for funding would be for them to provide interior and exterior photos of improvements and receipt of expenses.
So, these are the storage facility that was just built?
This, no, this would be the Tissel, Tissel Grocery Store. Tissel Grocery Store, the...
Oh, okay.
So, it put a, it put a building back in service.
Okay.
So, yeah, it would create another storefront. So, all right. Uh, the next one would be Stewart Flowers and Gifts, a proposal of business. Catherine and Jeremy Adams to purchase Stewart Flowers and Gifts, tip funds to go towards installation of a new roof. Tip rebate amount of $12,500 per year for two years for a total of $25,000. And then that, uh, minimum assessment would go up with the increase in the value. Again, the conditions of funding are interior photos, exterior photos, improvements and receipt of expenses, and legal expenses to be incurred by the developer. And then we have, uh, Don Adier, Reagan Dolly to purchase 105 Orkway Second Street. Stewart IO currently at the Stewart Appliance. Tip funds to go towards renovations and tip rebate in the amount of $12,500 per year for two years for a total of $25,000. So, minimum assessment again on that one with increase with the valuation of the building. Conditions of funding, again, interior and exterior photos and receipt of expenses and legal expenses to be incurred by the developer. So, I'm asking for the council to make a motion to send proposal to the panel of council.
I just, I have a question, um, sorry, I'm not good on addresses. So, currently Stewart Appliance for Don Adier, is that the corner spot where she is now, or?
Yeah, she would move.
She would move into what is currently Stewart Appliance?
Yes.
So, that Stewart Appliance, uh, that means that the Slosses are selling that space?
Yes.
Would she retain that one on the corner?
No.
She's just renting that?
And so, today's Matt's first day. Chip, Ash, and I meant to make sure that these numbers flow within the budget, so there's no hit to our operation. So, if that gets raised and we get a question about it, no.
Well, in the first stage of that process, Matt and I worked today on these things, and he would have proposed a...
And all, all three of these developers are okay with incurring the legal expenses?
We're not, we're not much for it.
One thing, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, the application you have here, you will sign on there. That's the first, the step we take. What Matt is asking for is to upload this proposal, uh, to start the classes, we're gonna refer it to the one that I'm referring to, the financial. Matt and I will be working those to kind of... Little bit admitting the opening.
Yeah, let's make that part of that motion. To modify the urban renewal plan.
So, we need a motion.
Yeah. Ash to...
Yeah, okay, I think someone else did.
Oh, no, no, no.
Move and second it? Okay, how do you vote, Belden?
Yes.
Renslow?
Who seconded it?
I did.
You did. Glass?
Yes.
Kavah?
Yes.
Thanks, Ben.
Yeah, I'll add my yes in there.
Well, I have a question though.
We're closed for questions.
That's about the Mid-American franchise fee.
Yeah.
During my interview process, it was, uh, there was a conversation about expansion on the south side of New York State. And Mid-American Gas was part of that conversation by accepting today's franchise fees. Don't you have interviews there a little bit? With, uh, probably the gas out there?
Not that it hinders, because they were, they were...
They're like an expansion versus, this is a, this is a franchise fee, so it's... You're saying we would, are, are you saying that we wouldn't collect it if they expanded out there? Because the territories are...
Wouldn't want to affect franchise fee for expanding gas out there?
I don't, I don't think so, because it's in the incorporated city limits, so I don't think it would, but that's a question for the...
You can ask him on that.
It's a good question.
Well, it, uh, part of that, um...
I'm not sure. Chip's running into a... Consulting before there's a lie.
I'd like to say Mike and Matt, and I'm assuming the lady in the green checkered shirt would be the Stewart Flowers. Katie Adams, thank you for interest in our nice little town there.
Thank you.
Okay, Dan, Dan, okay. Okay, 14?
Yeah, so Chief Rehaw wasn't able to make it tonight, but he is on the phone, so if you guys have any questions, then, then he's on the phone. Um, I just wanted to give an update, month in for the K-9 program, wanted to give you guys an update as well as I had them test the, uh, the contract from Midwest K-9, so you guys can check that out. So, I talked to people, different departments all around the state, was actually able to, originally I proposed 12 floor was my startup cost. Since then, we've gotten different, um, departments that donated things, been able to bring that cost down quite a bit. We're now looking at a new number of, excuse me, 8350. What we've raised so far is just over $3,500, so we've got about $4,800 left to go. Just about halfway a month in, I'm feeling pretty good about that, I've had a lot of people show a great deal of interest in it. We had a good turnout, Nashville night out, um, a lot of people came up and talked to me that night, so, um... I brought the contract in the other day, um, I talked with Ash about it, and, and he told me to go ahead and send it off to Beverly Wild. So, I did that, she got back to me, said, as far as legally, everything looks good. Dennis George with Midwest K-9, he said it's pretty much the same as what they had, we had the same exact drop as when they got Chloe. So, all that looks good, I guess, kind of what I'm going into here is when we first started talking with Dennis, usually he requires a down payment at the time when we're gonna even start this process. He was nice enough to work with us, and since at that time I hadn't come to the council yet, um, he waived that, and he gave me a month to, to try to come up with some money. So, like I said, we got $3,500 at this point, um, he would request $1,500 down for the dog, and, um, that was at the beginning of August is when he wanted an answer by. So, I talked to him the other day, said I wanted a chance to come talk with council, make sure that, you guys didn't have any questions for me? Give you guys an update, just make sure that, um, it's okay that I go ahead and, and give him that $1,500. I have a plan, as long as you guys are all good with it, to go tomorrow and, um, put that down.
Is that, that $1,500 coming out of the 35, except for contracts?
Yes.
Okay, so it's all coming out.
There is no cost to us.
And, and I think we said, you know, go ahead and do it, so I don't know if, do we need to... Give him permission, I mean, before they got permission.
Are you looking for permission to sign the contract?
I mean, yeah, yeah, I mean, just kind of, just want to make sure I have your guys' blessing to go forward. I don't know if you guys had a chance, like I said, I did send it off to Beverly Wild, um, she said everything looks good. And if you guys had a chance, that's why I want to make sure it's in your pack, if you guys got a chance to look at it, just want to make sure everything's good, and if you guys had any questions for me, I want to make sure I answer you guys.
Can you just kind of elaborate, you said you got some donations and stuff that, that started, what, what kind of stuff did you get?
So, like, the computer mount for the vehicle originally, it was quoted $1,200 for a Rolls-Royce, like, brand new. Mount Vernon Lisbon, which is over by Sea of Rapids, um, I actually went over and met with one of their officers, and they had one that they run the exact same computer setup as us, and they donated that to us. So, that obviously took $1,200 out, um, $1,100 for veterinary care, um, that was the best donation, was the first year, um, food, shots, everything, all donated, so that takes $1,100 out of it, and then every year after that, um, it's at a discounted price. So, um, that, you know, just some different, I mean, odds and ends here, either whether it's for the car, you know, leashes, different stuff for the dog, anything like that, so we've had quite a few different departments that I've talked with across the state that have donated.
Make a motion.
I talked to Daniel earlier. I did a little, I talked to him on Sunday at a picnic that we had, and I think I have found four different grant options for him to look at, that he can work with Matt and, and figure that out, you know, on, three of them, two of them were national, one was state, and then one of them was that Hero K-9, and that provides bulletproof vests and equipments and things of that sort, so I'll get that to him, because that helps with that cost too.
Moved by Kavah?
Second.
Second by Glass? How do you vote, Belden?
Second.
Thank you.
Glass?
Thank you.
Yes.
Kavah?
Yes.
Thank you, Danny.
Okay, Portland Utility Board member, I had one person give us... Well, three applications, this guy was the first one coming in, and possibly we might have two, two other unfortunately in short time, but I'd like to recommend that we put Craig Russell on the utility board, I talked to John Gabronson about it.
Who are we replacing?
Martin, and possibly when Cory gets his new house, he'll be out down, and I don't know, AV eventually gonna move with his daughter or not.
But right now, we're just, just on France.
Yeah, Francis was quoting Craig Russell.
He says, Kurt's got David too, lives out near the, Brice.
We have a motion.
Motion by Belden?
Second.
Second by Renslow, how do you vote, Belden?
Yes.
Renslow?
Yes.
Glass?
Yes.
Kavah?
Yes.
I want some information, a proposal for code enforcement, I didn't know if you were considering for now. I talked to him on the floor, that's on our two minutes.
This is something you two work out, I would, he does so much with this particular thing, that's something that, that, you know, I would, I'll support whatever you guys want to do, I guess, so.
We'll talk, see what, see what the proposals prepare to do.
Can I ask a question, we're going to that code enforcement? I saw that Ryan was here, and on the thing, it says that his stuff was due, Ryan Morris was here, I think he had to leave. Do we know where we're at with, because those weeds are still getting taller there.
I could love getting with Nadine.
And I, I think Dave, I talked to Chief Rehaw about it last month, and he was gonna look into it and see where they were at, but... I know he was here, and I'm sure that's probably why he was here, and probably couldn't stick around, but those weeds are super tall on top of those big, I mean, I can at least get those knocked down.
And I do know he's got people that has been working on it, I've seen people on...
Yeah, they're working on it, but the weeds are almost as tall as the house.
And they can take care of it.
Okay. You have anything else, Ash?
No.
I, I just have one other thing. With the, with the whole street issue, uh, I had a constituent call and say, remember to think in terms of school buses.
Nothing, yeah, same here.
Well, they were here.
District superintendent called. Rusty Shockey called, said the same thing, any restriction that would be put in place would not involve, is Forrest still here?
No.
Fire, fire EMS.
Well, that's, that's what I thought.
Hopefully, hopefully that committee will, you know, move a needle, but, and, you know, they won't, won't have to worry about it, that's the hope.
Go ahead, Matt, I got a couple.
Supervisor Gracie, thank you very much for coming up and speaking, I just wanted to tell you, I appreciate it very much. And being willing to be part of this group to try to resolve this, because like you said, you guys got a ton of roads, and so do we, we're just trying to, not hit the same people, you know, with the same tax, with the same... The Burger King thing, is there, I think we kind of heard from Steely, it's just gonna drag out, so is that something we should just put on hold for a while?
Okay.
I don't know that it's gonna drag out, because remember Steve said that the, the person who owns the building is different than the people who are leasing it, and the, and the people who were leasing it were in bankruptcy.
People do well.
Right, but I want to just say, when we were here, Steve had just mentioned that the...
They can't get anywhere with it, because it's...
The company, that was the, the tenant, he said, he was just sitting here, and he said, oh, no, the tenant was in, currently in bankruptcy, he knew that because of his other city clients having to deal with the same thing. And so, what made sense was that the landlord was getting money in the bankruptcy, and so, the guy's not gonna ruin that revenue stream if he doesn't have to, but it sounds like the bankruptcy is now closed. And so, maybe he would be, if someone was to contact him, maybe he'd be more opt to do something. Well, I don't know.
Beverly's been working on it.
Code enforcement's been...
I mean, she's good at this.
Someone's been mowing it, so...
She has done just about everything she can.
Yeah.
So...
Are, are we talking now that the bankruptcy's over, and the guy's not getting his revenue stream anymore?
I'm just saying, I don't know, I mean, Steve basically told us that you can only push uphill so much.
Right, I get that.
She can't make them, uh...
I'm just saying, now that the bankruptcy's over, and his revenue stream isn't there, maybe he'd be more opt to move, to do something, because he's not getting that guarantee money every month.
She sent him, I, yeah, she sent him a pretty hardcore letter.
Now that the bankruptcy's over, it's a different story.
Isn't it, we're in that time window, that letter sets up about 30 days?
Yes, we are in that time window, and I think she's on top of it.
Okay, so if, if nothing happens at that point, I mean, we can't expect her to, you know...
We can put it on hold, yeah. She's done everything she's done. So, we can put it on hold until things develop.
One big problem we have...
Uh, she said, uh, I asked her about that the last meeting, and I think it's the 15th or 16th, she had to wait for the weeds, for the IRS or whoever filed it.
Well, they consented already, but...
She, she's done everything too.
We're just wrapping it up.
This is her...
No, I'm not saying that, I'm just asking, are we wrapping it up?
Yeah.
And one problem, how about Burger King, all the semis are parked in there, throwing the trash all over, I had AV pick up what he could, but there are two cement fixtures there, they shouldn't be put inside.
The weeds and the ditch around there are so high.
Yeah, so, the, the last thing about this pond that we have, Forrest, I don't know what our site plan ordinance allows, but, uh, I mean, when that, when, there was reservations when that was allowed the first time, I know every town, every town around here has a pond, a cave, but it's not the pond, it's the, it's the eight-foot weed, so if we have something in our site plan that allows us enforceability to, or is it just, we just call it nuisance, because it's unkempt? It'd be part of your nuisance.
Okay.
Or infraction or whatever.
Yeah.
So, can we, can we, uh, you need to get this guy. I'm just saying.
And then you mentioned Quinn's building?
Yeah.
Which, he legally lived there on ground floor, and I had Nadine look up the ordinance here, and so this paper has this too, Norma, you cannot live on ground floor in downtown areas as a dwelling. And I'd heard rumors somebody might be wanting to move in, and I said, it's gotta be put on hold there.
Does that person...
What if the building is only on the first floor? What if they only have a one-story building? Because I can think of two, two currently, one may be occupied, the other not, I'm not sure, I'm just saying.
On the ground floor?
Well, but I'm saying a single-story building, if they only have one, no, I'm not saying we shouldn't follow it, I'm saying...
But what happens when they're, I don't know how far that goes back, but I know one building downtown that has people living behind the business.
Right.
And it's been that way for years, I mean, it was...
It's a two-story building.
And it is a two-story building, because there's apartments on top. And I know that the gentleman that lives behind it isn't who owns the building, but the people who first owned the building, I mean, they lived back there for years.
So, Linda Masonik has an apartment in the back of it on the first, and that's a bone of a apartment. I mean, it is, I'm just saying.
I don't know that AV's living in it, but...
No, it's not occupied.
And I just wanted to address that before somebody moved in. And one other thing, Forrest, while you're here, can we have a meeting possibly this week to discuss Second Street on the sidewalk? Are you tied up? Jim's tied up Wednesday morning.
Let me look at my calendar.
Okay. Get back and let us know, and see if we move forward on that issue.
So, what do you want?
Yeah, can we know, uh, ahead of time, so that way I can make time, so I know that I have time, because I think myself and Mike were on that one. In a couple of days notice, a little hard for me, but...
What is the direction? Special time off work and stuff, if we do it during the day, of course.
Right.
What is the direction on this dwelling? If the code says second floor with...
In the code, because I had the same question posted, what our code says, and it's for the down, I mean, it states downtown business district.
But it's applicable, it's, he's got this, it's right here, it says second floor and above, if you only have a one-story building, is that, I'm just saying...
Is that a question for Beverly? I mean, is she the, the person that does our interpretation of that? Or is it, I mean, I don't know.
Have to give her an email, bar master.
The letters need to be amended to say any buildings... I don't, I don't...
I just didn't want somebody to sell their house and then move downtown, and all of a sudden say, you're not supposed to be living here.
But we need to make sure that if we're gonna enforce it for one, we have to, it has to be across the board.
And I don't personally, it depends how it's done, you know, if somebody's living on the storefront, but if they have an apartment in the back of the first floor, what's it matter? I'm just asking.
It doesn't matter to me, as long as it's not the storefront, but we need to make sure that if we're going to enforce it for one...
It shouldn't be based on a one-story, two-story, three-story building.
It needs to be enforced on the whole way across.
We can address the rest if I have a. Can I be included on that meeting?
Yeah, you will.
Absolutely.
Okay, we're on public floor, is anybody out? Have anything?
The downtown thing or the sidewalk thing? Or both?
Nobody has anything? Council? All made it, thank you.